Okay, it's recording.
Okay, folks, it's 12:07. I think everyone's here, so I'll call this meeting to order. Judy, would you like to take the roll, please?
Yes, I would. Reeve?
Here.
Aslan?
Yeah.
Stiles?
Here.
Hozell?
Here.
Oh, Toby?
Here.
Also present is village solicitor Chris Connor and assistant village manager Johnny.
Thanks, Judy. Okay, so we have an agenda in front of us. We've had a pretty busy night. Hopefully we've all done our homework. Any additions, deletions, rearrangements in September?
I have a question.
Okay.
The first thing on the public hearing in the recommendation, it says that, or in planning permission duties, it says that it's a consented agenda item, and it doesn't say so in the agenda.
Yeah.
Does that mean?
Well, I think, Johnny, you want to address that?
So, the way that the ordinance is written for section 12.6.11A, it doesn't explicitly call it a consent agenda item, but it acts as a consent agenda item source as the text of the motion. So that's how that is ironed out.
You know what?
Subdivision.
Oh, sorry. This just occurred to me. I know I'm supposed to keep the phone tabs on this, but I don't believe you guys elected your, you elected your chair for this year. I mean, I know you were it last year, and we just come up. I'll just research that and bring it back to you.
Okay. Attorney planning. So, Johnny, based on your understanding, and Chris, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, is this is, if everything is in order, we can just take a up-down vote on these two items without having a public hearing? Is that, do you agree with the ordinance?
Well, without discussion. If somebody wants to discuss it then?
Yeah.
Then.
Correct.
If the planning commission takes no action at the meeting?
Correct. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Next item is review of the minutes. Pretty quick meeting time. You're the new chair. Since we're having lectures next week, that's fine. Anyone have any changes to this first page? To the second page? If not, we have a motion to accept this note.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll abstain since I don't interfere.
I abstain from interfering. Because they're streaming.
Now, we don't have any communications. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is a time in the meeting where if you have a question or comment about anything that is not on the agenda, now is the opportunity to address the planning commission. Anyone have anything? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the public hearings. So, based upon what you understand from Chris and John, these two subdivision applications, if we choose not to take action, then they can be approved without any further discussion. Is that correct?
As the regulation has written, the planning commission, if you take no action on this at this meeting, the minor subdivision is deemed approved.
That's correct.
I have a question about that. Is, is there a preferred way? Because it seems it's real easy just to let staff take action. But is it better for the commission to have voted on?
I can see both scenarios. In my experience, I've been in planning commissions, some staff to planning commissions where every single lot division was voted on by the planning commission. And a lot of these values do allow for small lot splits that do conform to zoning code to be allowed. With most lot splits, I do look at a, I do look at tests. Usually a three-question test to make sure that they have means of egress to the site, and that the site meets the zoning, the new lots meet the zoning requirements, and also that any bodies that are set on the lot meet the setback requirements for the zoning code. But ultimately, it would be a decision of planning commission and council to decide on a new regulation for that section of the code ordinances. And based upon my review, I think these both meet the requirements, and so I don't think we need any action. Does anyone have any?
Finally, then.
As a, as a counterpoint to that, one of the things you could do is simply do it the traditional way, which is make a motion, and that way you can have the discussion because
Yeah.
the work's been done, and so to me, it's extinction without a difference. But it does allow for some comment by the planning commission. Do it that way, and the time savings is minimal tonight. For the time lost is minimal.
For this application, because if you take no action, it's deemed approved, and the staff recommendation is that the application is to get some of this paperwork to the village, I would recommend that the planning commission review it and accept the staff recommendation on this.
Okay. Can I ask just one other question? Why is it that we get these long parcel ID numbers on the public hearing notice? It's really, I, it took me forever to figure out that these first two things were these two things, because it isn't, the description on the, on our agenda is actually not, it's hard to figure out that this is that, right? This description here on this agenda is not clearly these two agenda items. And I'm not sure, partly it's because there's a big, long parcel ID number, and it's a much shorter parcel ID number, and you can figure out that if you take all the zeros out, that's the same parcel ID. But like 450 Allen Street is very clearly at the top of this sheet, but 450 Allen Street is not on the agenda, so just trying, trying to figure this out when I'm in kind of a hurry, as I was, was confusing to me. So I just want to say that.
But wouldn't use the application number in the agenda solve that problem as well?
Is the application number there?
The application number's 15-008.
It's not on the agenda.
The other thing is that the way the F number of the zeros on it is from the directive from the county auditor's website.
Right.
And I think the green parcel ID number that the applicant provided is an abbreviated version of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
No parcel ID or that.
So it's just, it's just hard to go back and forth. It would be nice if there was a much clearer, like, one of the much correspondence between what I saw on the report and then that. I don't want to give any more time with that. But I. I'm sorry, I'm still confused. One and two are what? Which?
Are eight and nine. 15-008, 15-009, the lot division. Both of them are one to staff.
Okay. But there's two applications. They are handwritten by the applicant.
I'll forward that one.
Right, but that doesn't occur in the agenda. It's hard, it's hard, it's hard to go from this to that.
So are you wanting a motion, then, to step aside? Okay, I move approval of this lot division with the staff recommendation.
A second?
Yes.
Judy, you want to take the roll? Any discussion first? Okay.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
There's two documents from veteran in here, and as far as I can make out, the lot numbers don't match. Just like, like, I guess, like, there's 81, 79, and 80, and 79 is between them, right? And then on one, it has different lot numbers.
Well, the applications are saying I had 81, not 80.
Okay, so those were together, and now they're being divided.
What is on the map is the, on the color map that was printed on the village GIS system is what it exists right now. The applicant has provided a vector map that shows the split, and that is actually the first page, not the second page of that map. So the one that has the overview has the line split there. But he's also proposing to split parcel ID one, but there's no line there. Now, parcel ID one is of the size that can be divided. There's two lots in the RA district, both in width and in area, if it is divided along the Cory Street side. So the staff recommendation is that we're fine with 79 being divided, as you showed that, but you need to show where you're dividing 81, so make sure. And then we also need to have the official file record provided to the village.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion? Judy, you want to take the roll, please?
Yes, Toby?
Yes.
Aslan?
Yes.
Hozell?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the initial application for 423 West Limestone Street. It's the public hearing. So what we'll do is we discuss this internally, then have any questions for the applicant, and then we open a public hearing. People will make comments, close that public hearing, come back, conclude the discussion, and if we're of the right opinion, we'll make a decision. So Johnny, you want to explain?
Sure. This is the application, 15-010, for initial use of an accessory dwelling unit. Property of 423 West Limestone Street. Property owner has converted an existing garage, storage space on the second floor, into what the village code has defined as an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. The applicant stated that the intent of the remodel was to give a family member a personal space to store, and use a large horizontal sewing machine, which is in the pictures. Village staff was alerted to the remodel by the county building department, and upon investigation found that the installation of bathroom and kitchenette had been installed in that space. Two-story accessory buildings located inside aren't existing house. You can see it on the map that's provided. Dwelling unit is accessed by a staircase in the rear of the garage. Property is zone RC, high-density residential. Requirements for initial use are reflected below, as well as for accessory dwelling units. Do you guys want me to review those?
No.
Okay. As usual, the duty of the planning commission is to, here inside these applications, approve, modify, or modify the application. If you approve the permit, then you can oppose time limitations and require that one or more things are done before the request is initiated. Those are detailed findings on the next page that go over some of the highlights. In general, in summary, we review the application. We found that, in general, the proposal meets the conditions of the zoning code and the associated visioning and planning documents. However, there are some concerns. The accessory dwelling unit does not completely share utilities with the main building. The electric, for smart reason, has been split off, and the accessory dwelling unit's meter is separate from the house. I spoke with our electrical superintendent, and he said, oh, actually, the solution to that would be to retrench a line back to the main house from that meter, and that would share the utility again. So. Looking at those requirements, it basically, the accessory dwelling unit proposal basically means all but one of the requirements to follow zoning code. There is one thing that the zoning, that I could not determine, which was the actual square footage of the accessory dwelling unit, however, we believe that it does comply with the 750 square foot maximum. The place of the garage meets the setting, the sizing requirements. We consider, because if you look at the map, this is on two lots, actually. We consider trying to regulate it like a separate house. But the way that this is treated, this is actually code. Staff felt that the accessory dwelling unit regulations were more conforming with the application of this project than just applying as a new house, since there's still a desire to share utilities between the principal structure and the accessory dwelling unit. Recommendation, well, the local superintendent's recommendation is also in that paragraph of putting the separate meter back into the main, the main house, by subfeeding it back into the house. With that in mind, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the accessory dwelling units, with the findings as stated, and that the conditions for the approval will be that the accessory dwelling must restore sharing of electric with the principal structure. Alternatively, the planning commission can also deny the application based on that regulation that stated 1262.08E1B, which requires dwelling to be shared with the principal structure. You have any questions?
Good luck, Johnny.
Why, do you know the reason for in the zoning, why that's a requirement? Accessory dwelling units share all utilities?
I don't know for certain, but I assume that the reasoning behind that, when the zoning code was passed, is a concern that the house, that the accessory dwelling units would still remain subordinate to the principal structure on property, and that there wouldn't be this opportunity to split lots that might not be billable. For example, in this situation, it's on two lots. The second lot is a billable lot, but it is also where a garage is located. So we felt that because the garage is still utilized by the primary structure adjacent to it, and still in the same ownership, that the accessory dwelling regulations and the sharing utilities as part of that are more appropriate.
And so to, only the Board of Zoning Appeals has the right to grant a variance to that condition on accessory dwelling?
That is incorrect. The Board of Zoning Appeals is only allowed to grant variances on a dimensional basis. They cannot grant a variance on some regular condition or stipulation of the requirement of zoning code.
And neither can you.
Neither can you.
Hey, was it, we had many.
Oh, we went round and round on this.
And, and there's this tension between people worried about too much infill, essentially a subdividing that was essentially being done on the fly instead of by actually dividing a lot, and like John said, or actually subdividing a lot that is too small to be subdivided, so that you're having several, your separate utilities. So we felt like at least if you had a single utility, then you're at least linking the two buildings in that way, even if, you know, there is a smaller infill unit even on the property.
No, it was, it was a difficult decision, and that's what we were, the people who had done this a lot who were, said, you want to do this, this is the, I can't say this is really the best way to do it. But there definitely was some difference of opinions on this, but that's, that's where it wound up. And I mean, if people are building on a fly, we do have a lot of problems with flooding, and so that's also part of the issues. It gives people a little bit more control versus people building accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
So.
That are really other houses.
Yeah.
Any more questions for John? We also have Thea, can you, John, do you want to?
Yeah, I want to, I wanted to.
Yeah.
I think we are on camera.
Okay.
Say we are.
I'm Donna Haller, 423 West Limestone. And I wanted to have the utilities attached, but the electric company said I couldn't do that because the house didn't have enough power. And they already dug two trenches because they originally didn't put enough power in for the sewing machine. We have this big, long arm sewing machine up there. And so I tried to get it connected, but I couldn't. J&amp;J Electric are the ones that came out and told me that, so.
That was one of my questions, is how can there's no amperage requirements? Because if they're only getting 100 ampere per transformer, that's not enough for two buildings.
And they hadn't put 200 ampere in there.
Right, that's the same amount, but it might not have gone to the standard in the housing building.
So is that why, is that why Johnny is saying?
Re-put it back.
Reroute it back from accessory to the house.
To the house, but the house just doesn't have enough power to attach to it.
Now, they're saying.
Like going the other direction.
Whoever has the highest power. If the transformer were powering the garage, it's more powerful to change it to your house. That's what I think they're trying to say.
It feels like a lot of money.
If we use that condition, then our superintendent will be working with her to get that taken care of. Make sure that the, that the E can go back into her house, and she be able, that the power system will be able to handle that.
Okay.
So what are you saying? I'm not sure I followed.
What happens if she can't fulfill the requirements of our division?
Does that sound like it's going to be a lot of money? And, right now, so, I mean, I, you know, how's that happen? How's that work?
I don't know. I'll think about that, though. Anyone have any more questions for Donna?
Because I did attach the plumbing to the house, because, I mean, I originally planned on everything.
Everything, wanted everything to be attached.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, let's keep all that in mind, and if there's any more questions for Donna? Any more discussion? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Hear from anyone else who has anything to say, and move forward, and then bring this topic back up, I guess, here in a little bit.
I wish Johnny were here, because I would
Yeah.
really like to have a better sense of what we're asking you to do.
Yeah, and what, what options we have.
This is so not my area of expertise.
Okay, well, with that, I guess I'd like to open a public hearing. If anyone else has, here has any comments regarding this matter, please step forward, identify yourself in the microphone, and, and say your piece.
My, I'd love to comment a question.
Yes.
Question for John. Would the alternative be that she, go ahead. Denise Meyer? Hi, Denise Meyer, staff person.
Can you come up to the microphone? I know it's a pain, but we have to be, we have to make everybody be.
I was talking about this with John today. Denise Meyer, staff person. The alternative, would that not be going back to the idea that of actually splitting the lot?
That says the difference, treating it as a different house then?
Yes. I mean, that could be alternative.
It would have to, I mean, you could share the drive, but you wouldn't be able to ship a garage.
But I mean, as far as, then you could have your separate utilities.
Can share the one.
You have to completely separate utilities, definitely.
I can't do that.
So this is why it seems impractical to do that.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. And now it's back here for discussion. I think we know there's the one issue. Is there a way we can resolve this in a manner that meets the, at least the spirit of the code and doesn't pass down all of this either?
Well, I wonder, because if we would approve it with the condition that the accessory dwelling must restore the shared electricity with the main one, then that's, then the choice would be she would either do that or would not be able to use the accessory building for the purpose that she wants to. I wonder if the other thing would be to wait and have your expert on electricity check it.
Have the electrical staff work with Donna to see if they can tell him something.
And, I mean, that would put it off for another month or so. But then that would give her the option of that if, if this restoring it doesn't work, then she could look at doing it as two separate levels.
But in the code, what, what are the, like, ramifications of, like, would that mean, like, not flushing the toilet, not using the sink, like, what? Not using accessory dwelling as an accessory dwelling, what does that actually mean? And how is that enforceable?
Well, it means you shouldn't use it as a dwelling.
Okay.
So you can still use it for the sewing machine, but you can't use it as a rental or a, for someone to live there.
So someday down the road, if I wanted to rent it out.
Right.
Which is why I feel, put a bathroom in it, so someday.
You can do that. And I guess, I'm hesitant to make an exception, only because we went around and around this thing, I mean, for months and months.
Yeah.
And there were, it's probably 20 public meetings where this was a topic. I mean, it was.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
I don't know why I didn't ever hear this. I went and got all my permits, and, you know, my building permits, and plumbing, and electric, and, you know, had the village was out, the electric company was out twice, because they, you know, dug two trenches, and no one mentioned this to me.
Right.
I, you know, how are you supposed to find that stuff out?
So the restriction is really just people sleeping there.
Yes, as a dwelling.
As a dwelling. It's not able to be used as a dwelling unless this is approved in some way.
Right. So she could really keep on doing what she's doing.
But down the road, I really would, you know, maybe want to, either me rent it out or sell it, and then.
But you have not, you have not taken the suggestion of subfeeding it back to the house to find out, like, how expensive that would be. You don't, you don't know, right?
No, because, I mean, I tried originally to have the house tied to there, and they said I couldn't, so I just.
Got a separate.
It's not like I did it to try and get around anything.
It's very clear that you were really trying to do everything right, and
So, I mean.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I wish we weren't in this little bit of a pickle now.
So the question is good, too. We can find out that.
I mean, when you go get a, I would think when you got a building permit and all the other permits, that says, yes, you could do this.
Right.
A lot, a lot of these things are handled by the county or the health departments. And so if you have a, under electrical work, the county just looks at that. Sometimes they just look at that, and that peaks.
But at one point, my building was here at the village, talking to somebody about this, and nobody's ever mentioned it.
Well, I would assume that the building inspector would say, you know, do you have a zoning permit? Isn't that the first thing before they approve?
They didn't mention that. When, I think what happened was when they came to final, do the final building permit, that's when they said, you know, do you have zoning permit?
Right.
No one mentions that I needed anything about zoning or.
When'd you do this?
Pardon?
What year?
This spring.
This spring?
This spring.
Right, well, so. I assume when builders come to the village, we give them, they're planning to do, was the accessory structure there, and it was a garage?
Yeah, it's been there for 20 years.
So that's been there for a long time.
Would have qualified like an remodel with a second floor.
Right.
So I mean, it's kind of one of those, I think it's one of those, is that I can't always speak for the county building department, where all the pieces added up to an accessory dwelling, but all pieces didn't work clear to the building department until the final happened.
When they were doing.
Because that's when they called me and said, come here and look at this.
Right. They knew we had kitchen and a bathroom in it, I mean, because I had
And they're not.
All those different, I had to have permit for every water.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the building, building department typically says, check with local zoning, but then they call up and say, hey, we're doing a plumbing permit or something, doing a permit as for a remodel. Typically, the answer is, no, you don't, because usually you're not scaling the footprint of the building.
Right.
Right, so, it is entirely possible someone could have said, hey.
And really, everything you did was fine. It was just that electrical decision that, that turned out to be.
And I never even heard that part until tonight.
Right.
No one's mentioned that. I mean, I didn't.
Oh, really? So before you came into this?
Right, right now is when I heard about that.
Okay. Well, um. Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
And I think she talked about like $500 or.
The village was there a lot, and they didn't say anything.
Well, that's the thing. Everything you were doing was fine, except for this meter issue.
And they, I mean, they knew the meter was there, and.
And I think, so what you are voting on right now, that's something else to point out, is whether or not this can be utilized in accessory dwelling units. It's clearly out there in terms of that in the future, however, they're not doing that right now.
Yes.
So I, I think it's probably feasible to allow her to continue the use that she's using right now for the sewing machine, and have her work with the village electrical department, figure out what we do about utilities, and then report that back to the planning commission, and, and then make a decision at that point.
So in other words, would we be kind of tabling this? And just letting you continue? We'll just table this. That's what I'm going to make, is if we table this, you should probably, because you're not needing, it's not immediate that you want to do that, it's in the future sometime. So, to get a clearer picture for you, what's, what's being suggested here, um, and maybe talk to your own electrical person about what they think that kind of a change would cost, and then we'll get a report back one way or another.
Okay. I, I, I just want to push a process, and I'm just asking, and I don't, in a way, it doesn't seem to me to be the appropriate thing to table it.
Because you're tabling it indefinitely?
Yeah, it's indefinite, and we, she could use it this way for two years, and so...
So maybe, shall we...
I mean, I, I don't know that there's anything for you to hear, if she simply needs to go gather more information and come back at such time as she wants to. Bring it, and if she wants that in a timely fashion, and you want to work with her to get Johnny in there and get something going, tabling it seems reasonable. If she'd rather just kind of wait, gather her information, and come back a year from now, then we should probably not table it.
But we do want to withdraw the application?
Well, withdraw, I don't have a clue.
But we do want Johnny to work with her.
Well, but that can happen, that can happen anyway. What you could do is...
Well, that's what we did with the Anhok stuff, is we tabled it.
But they were going to come back at the time?
There was a, there was a...
And they had a report back.
Yeah, there, I think, yes.
Well, I, I would suggest you simply table, put it on the next agenda, there's, we don't know when the next meeting's likely to happen at this point. That probably will be a couple of months, and...
And if it, if in the meantime, she finds it's too expensive, I just want it to be better for her to withdraw it than for us to deny it, from Donna's perspective.
What would I draw?
Well, there's, there's three choices that have been put on the table. One is, the planning commission could deny the application, which you wouldn't want.
That's what I think.
The, the second is to withdraw it, meaning, all right, I'm gonna go figure out what this problem is with the electric, see if it's feasible, and then come back with a new application. Or the third option is to ask that it be tabled, in other words, continued, for a period of time. You could ask for the next agenda of the planning commission, because we're not sure when that will be. And that would give you at least weeks, if not a month or two, to talk to the village staff with your contractor or your electrician. And if there were some type of practical hardship or difficulty in doing it, then village staff would know, and then when the matter comes back before the planning commission, it could be discussed more knowledgeably.
Sounds good.
Do you have a preference of...
Withdraw it, or you want to table it?
We can table it, and then if you want to withdraw it later, we can always withdraw it, if you withdraw it.
Then we can solve the mystery.
Okay.
Okay, so we have motion here of...
I move that we table this, uh, conditional use application.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you want to call a roll?
Yes.
Toldo?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Style?
Yes.
Aspen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So table. Give my bottom.
Thank you.
I wish that one's a mess-up.
I learned a lot in this whole process. I've never done anything like this, and I...
Okay, the next item on the agenda is conditional use application for 527 Dayton Street for office. John, do you want to describe the application, please? Yes, this is application fifteen dash eleven, uh, Maxine Scuba for an additional use office at five twenty seven Dayton Street. Maxine Scuba is a licensed professional counselor specializing in career concerns, life transition. She plans to operate a part-time practice out of the, uh, the property, the house there. Parkings for zoning code are listed, the duties are similar to the last application. Planning, uh, the, the, the planning department looked at the proposal. The proposal indicates that there could be parking on the street, which is permitted. There's also parking in the driveway and a garage, uh, section twelve sixty-two, E five L, in case a client parking must occur in the driveway or home. I do kind of want to borrow some clarification on E five L, that's related to home occupation. So it doesn't apply here, since the applicant is not residing on the premise. The applicant's indicated the office will be visited once or twice a day, one client at a time. And due to that, at low intensity, staff recommends that, well, I just want to dial this back, because this was, apologies, written by the intern. One of the things I do want to point out is that Dayton Street is a nocturnal street, so the properties have good traffic and roadway access. The property has ample parking for that, and, uh, the hours of use and the value will not be in an intensity of such that will impact the residential character of the neighborhood. With that, planning, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use of the findings that are listed on the sheets. Do you have any questions? Any questions for John?
Has this, uh, property been used as an office before?
Uh, our records now, and, uh, there's an adjacent property that had, that is used as an office.
Okay.
I think five twenty seven.
I was thinking, I remember seeing a little sign on that.
Um, any more questions for John, any discussion here? Yeah, and, uh, Maxine, you want to come up and identify yourself?
Yes. Hi, I'm Maxine Scuba, and, um, and I own, I'm a new owner of five twenty seven Dayton Street. I had a property in the state of Maine, which I recently sold, and I did a ten thirty-one exchange, meaning that, um, my kind. I had rented it out, now I have to, um, anything that I buy now has to be rented, meaning that I can't occupy it for two years. So even if I wanted to live there, I can't for two years. So, I have a renter who is a single person, who's very happy with the arrangement, likes the arrangement. When I walked in, I realized that it could easily be divided, because there's this big, um, um, I'm losing it.
It's a big door.
And it's a solid wood door between the office and the rest of the house, and I made a little drawing. This is the front door, and walking to the front door, and there's the office. The tenant would be using this door, which is the living area, the whole living area, and then these are stairs to the upstairs bedrooms. So it's very separate when this door is closed. And, uh, I really don't have that much business because of my specialty, um, and I don't want that much business. I'm, I'm really tired, but career counseling is my, um, my calling, and I want to continue it, and I want a more public face, um, to it, uh, here in town, so...
Can I see that, Smithy?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can I ask you some questions clarifying this, Matty? Is there any, is there unit separation between your office and the tenant's space? As in, like, is there a separate entrance for the tenant?
Yes.
Yeah, the back and the front.
And the second question is, do you know that door is a fire-rated door, or not?
You mean the separation door? Fire-rated, I don't know, it's, it's fully, um, it's all wood.
But it's like locking key, so you can lock it in, in that?
I don't want to lock it, because the furnace is in the office area, and so, and I don't want to lock it, because that is the, that is the second exit. So in case of an emergency or fire, that will not be locked for the tenant to exit, if, if need be.
Have you run this plan by the county building departments?
No, I had no knowledge of running the plan by the county building.
The other reason why I asked that is because as a more building inspector, some of these, the shared arrangement here may give some cause for international residential code. So I would advise that it doesn't, it doesn't look forward, that you talk to the county about your plans, to make sure that the, uh, that this will meet the building code, the way you plan on using it for.
Does this mean that I have to wait before I go to meet?
It means that if the planning commission does approve this, I recommend, as the planning person, you speak to the, the county, you have a discussion with them on what you need to do, if you need to do anything at all. And so, yeah, you have to meet with them. However, that won't, this will not, this is a separate conversation we will be having tonight.
So what he's saying is, there's this other inspector, but it's not like a commission, they don't have to meet. You would just meet with them individually and ask them if it, and it shouldn't really affect our decision, because we don't have to approve those kinds of things for the building inspector that's there daily with. So it's a recommendation, he's just saying, you might want, you should do that.
And would that have something to do with a fire-coated door that would separate?
Yeah, and, um, this is about fire and land life safety, so they would be looking at some of those things, but it's a pre-existing building, so there are a lot of those stuff might not be changed. I don't know the details, especially when you're dividing something. Typically, when you divide units, you want to have fires separated, at least a three-hour fire separation, uh, floor and door between units and separate facilities. That's in the international building code. However, you're in a house, things might be a little more lenient, but I'm not, I don't know for certain, I just know that, you probably should have checked out.
And a window can be a second, if you'd like, as well.
That's correct.
Uh, so, so it could be, um, well, it could be then, you're, you're talking about the need, the possible need for a, um, a door that can't be locked, that would totally separate the two parts.
Yeah, and you would probably want to talk to the county building department, great county building departments, and they would be able to give you more clarity as to what their building regulations would apply to that, to your project. Yeah, our zoning code is, uh, stipulate that those need to be separate.
And so, if this is, if this part's confusing, what I would suggest is maybe, um, come back, Denise will be in the office. Uh, you can just come back and talk to Denise about John's recommendation, because really, it doesn't, it doesn't impinge on what we decide here tonight. It's just a recommendation he's making, based on his expertise of buildings. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And it's also a safety issue.
Exactly.
That's why...
And that's why...
This all started because I wanted to erect a sign in front.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about our sign code, that's what we're working on next.
Yeah, we have that, too.
Yeah.
We're not making a...
We're laughing at ourselves, really laughing at ourselves, because that sign code is terrible.
Well, does, if you approve this tonight, does that mean that I can get a sign made?
Yes, yes, it does, in fact.
And we actually can't do you how big it's gonna be.
Which would be the sign for residential districts that for non-residential uses, which I think is correct. The sign that you submitted would probably be approved, I guess, under stuff, but I think it will be, I think it will be required. Okay, any more questions for Maxine?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. With that, if you have a seat, we'll open the public hearing, anyone else to come up and, um...
Comment?
Comments? Please identify yourself, and, um, say a piece.
I'm Judith Schimpf, and I live at five thirty-five, two doors down. And I know Maxine, I didn't know that was her property until I walked in tonight. And I'm very much in favor of it, I know the inside of the house quite well, and I think it's a perfect use of it, with the front entrance being her office entrance. Also, Dr. Portenga has a sign out right next door to that, to that property. So it wouldn't, it would be keeping with our wonderful Dayton Street community, and I, I really support it, so I hope it will kind of okay as well.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, well, with that, then we'll close the public hearing.
I want to say, I'm really, I like the fact that it's an excuse, that it's still a rental property, because sometimes people want to just convert the whole house, and then we lose a rental property, we need rental property, so I'm, I'm just very pleased that you're trying to do this in such a way to have both the businesses and the rental.
Well, that was intense, the whole public scene. Sectionally good, so... Uh, any more conversation here? If not, we have a motion to do something.
So we are, I guess I will move if we approve this, but I'm wondering if we want to then also recommend that she do consult with the county building inspector to see what they might recommend. Do we want that to be a part of it, or do we just want to approve it?
I just...
It's a matter of process, too, I mean, like, they would, if she got approval, she'd have to apply for change of use permit. Changing, the new change of use permits have language on this, that says you must, you know, you should, shall consult with the building department.
I, I think we should just leave it as... Just to approve it, okay? And I move to approve, uh, the application for the, um, the five twenty-seven Dayton Street, operating a part-time practice, a practice. Second?
Any further discussion? Judy, prepare to call a roll?
Yes. Style?
Yes.
Aspen?
Yes.
Toldo?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Me?
Yes. Good. Pass. Okay, very good. Thanks, everyone, for that. Next on the agenda is the, uh, some old business, some text amendments to the zoning code that John's been working on. John, do you want to give us the overview, and then we can get into the details? Uh, just, I'll just give you the review of everything. Some of this stuff is new business, some of this stuff is old business, some of the, the old business is really conformative, just Kansas, some of the zoning law and stuff that we talked about in the fire, uh, planning commission meetings. Yeah, just give us the executive summary of your, the, your main items, let me go through them one by one, in detail.
Okay.
Okay. So there are five items. One would be, closing to reduce the restriction on accessory structures. Two is the addition of pool fencing requirements for outdoor indoor pools. Three is the addition of driveway setback exemptions to the traditional setback. Four is allowing construction of accessory building fences additions on adjacent non-moving lots. And five is a reorganization of the signage, uh, ordinance by KITE, for better clarity and readability. The first one, accessory dwelling restrictions, and the text is, is attached. What it does is, uh, during our analysis, property, despite that regulation limiting, limiting accessory structures by thirty percent of required rear yard is extremely restrictive for properties that may want to occupy accessory structures in the rear yard. Now, let me review what that means. Thirty percent of required rear yard is not the entire rear yard. Required yard is the yard that's from the property line to what the maximum zoning setback is. So if I'm in RB, and the rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, and my lot is fifty-five feet wide, then the twenty-five by fifty-five area, that's thirty percent of that area, which takes you down, in most cases, to below two hundred square feet. So, I think the regulation was written in the sense that they didn't want more than thirty percent of the rear yard to be occupied by accessory structure, however, required yard is overly restrictive, especially in light of the existing requirement for fifty percent of the building, principal building area, and a seven fifty square foot maximum. Uh, so we're recommending that that be removed from the ordinance altogether. The second is that the code is unclear on a couple of parts of section twelve sixty-two oh four, A six. The second is that the code is unclear on a couple of parts of section twelve sixteen point oh four A six. Regarding whether it applies to multiple accessory structures, or it's, it's only one, and how it can be built on the lot. The proposed text modifies this part to allow for one or a combination of accessory structures to meet some of our lax rules, which is two-thirds, or sixty-six percent, or a hundred square feet, whichever is less. This protects the village, I think, from, I think the reasoning for this ordinance, and I'm guessing here is to prevent overly large pull arms, or large garages to be, to occupy yards, you have this rear footage, or to maximize. So I think there's definitely a goal in the village to retain a certain degree of open space. However, for a lot of lots that wouldn't meet the number of requirements of the RAs, Bs, and Cs, you would be limited to not having, not being able to put up a lot of stuff. So you wouldn't be able to have a shed and a garage, you would have to choose two or three. And for example, the application on eleven zero eighteen Avenue with the accessory building units, that was originally supposed to be larger, but they had to shrink it to meet our seven fifty requirement. So. So that offers a little more leeway for multiple structures and also clarifies some of that language of accessory structures. An added recommendation that's not in the text would be to clarify that accessory structures located within a certain distance could be counted as accessory structure, as a, as part of one accessory structure. And that is a reflection of twelve sixteen point oh four A one, which says that an accessory building is within ten feet of a principal building, is counted as part of a principal building, and is a rejoined hash.
Right, so it's a clarifying.
So, I mean, with just being that you can have one, two close together, counted as one. So you just want to discuss that first, or do you want to meddle in for all the other ones?
Let's start there.
Let's start there.
Okay, let's start there. Enough to start with, I think. And now, this is not a public hearing, right, this is, we're just discussing this as draft modification, so.
Right, so, so we're not making the, we're, what are we doing with this tonight?
This is.
Purely discussing?
So you're not deciding, you have enough vote to approve the text or deny the text. You're just basically like a legislative cram session. And if you want to give the public an opportunity to get input on these items, then that would also be for.
Right, and then if we say yes, we like this, or whatever.
You can say yes, we like it, you can change it.
So if we say yes, we like it, then it would come back to us again, or would it go straight to the council?
It would come back to you again, Judy would have to advertise the actual language as being changed, and then it would be formally voted on.
Formally appear, and then recommended to the council.
That's correct.
Anyone here to start?
Well, I, I liked it, I think, I think it makes sense.
I have, I guess I have a problem changing the dimensions of things, just because we went around and around and around on these dimensions, and some people didn't get their way, and some people did, and, so I would, and that was just the result of multiple public hearings, and opportunity for, for a little way of, and so, I understand your point about the required, use of the word required, making, making things different than just the backyard. I also know that we went around about thirty versus fifty percent, and there were questions about fire safety, there was questions about drainage, and, and the impact of those accessory dwellings on the overall neighborhood, and those kind of, especially with respect to fire and drainage. And yet, I think like Laurie said, I think our attempt was not this required administrative definition, it was thirty percent of the rear yard.
Yeah, I don't think we understood that required rear yard had that severity specified. I don't, I never looked at it and thought, oh, that's probably something specific it didn't mean.
That's a legal definition.
Yeah, I didn't know that, so.
What about just dropping the word required?
Give a new dad? That would probably make the, the only restriction be the fifty percent billable area and the seven fifty square foot.
Why don't you leave it at thirty percent?
Plus thirty percent rear yard.
And then we bash through these things multiple times.
He's saying the fifty percent on six would be more restrictive than thirty percent of rear yard, that required rear yard.
Yeah, and again, I just, on six, again, I'd like to leave it alone, at least, it's limited to years.
Number six alone?
Since we passed this.
You were, you suggested that this, that you felt like this was a barrier in a, in a case that came before.
I've seen three applications for garages that have had to be reduced in size because of this regulation. One was the accessory building, another one's another garage, and another one is a application where the applicant wanted to build a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, and they also had to shut out the property. And the count, the combined area would exceed fifty percent of billable area and the seven fifty requirement by just a little bit.
So those have changed, have you ever done the required?
Uh, one of them changed, I don't think the other one went through, and then the other one is actually because of the required yard, and they have not proceeded with it at this time.
With the with the, the square footage reduction, in all of those cases, you didn't feel there was concern about things like, you know, flooding, the water going on at other properties as a result of having just a bigger building on the lot?
So, uh, what you're trying to articulate is that because bigger buildings have possibly, because they're more, they're more pervasive services, that they have drainage issues.
Yeah.
You know, we can add requirements that, for example, the driveway requirement. And as proposed tonight, as a reply, it says that we'll ensure that drainage is located where you can chase property. So we go, the idea is that if you have drainage, you want that drainage to go to a city drain, or a builder's drain, or at least into the street where it carries away somewhere else or to a ditch. So you want to be able to have, you don't want to be, have a clear situation where water's running off into your neighboring property, causing a sense. So you could add language like that.
So the square footage, I, I think what I hear you, what I hear implied in what you're saying is that the square footage requirements are not so much actually about that, because that's really handled by other issues. Square footage is more about perceptions of open space, of openness in neighborhoods, to be fair.
And there is a maximum lot coverage already in each county district for residential zones. A lot will get other existing ordinances to see if there's, there's some guidance on accessory structure regulations, removing size, and a lot of them don't remove the size, at least, the only size that I've found is that the accessory structure couldn't be longer than the principal structure.
Right.
So a lot of the places really kind of are flexible. However, I know that one of the big key goals of the villages is to preserve open space and to preserve that, that character of the village. So, that's why I only propose a modest fifty foot, fifty square foot increase in two-thirds. Because we have this situation where fifty percent of the building, if your building is
If you're trying to build a small house.
Yeah, if you're a tiny house, the, the house that, in one of the examples, was about twelve hundred square feet, so it had the six hundred.
You could inadvertently be encouraging larger building, larger main building, because you restricted the accessories so much. Now, that was, that was something, we, we did talk about it a little bit. I mean, because part of, I mean, part of when we, when we approved it, yes, we did talk about a lot of these issues, but we also, or at least I also thought, well, we, let's see how it works, and if we're running into walls, then we can readjust in the public process again. But we needed to get, you know, a million details decided within a kind of abstract situation. And so, we, we passed it all, I, I, I hear what you're saying, like, we did go around on some of these things, and I am, you know, I don't want to change things just to change them if we have one weird situation, you don't want to make laws based on one.
No.
One kind of strange situation, like, you know, Donna Haller's situation seems like a pretty unusual situation that I, you know, I don't, I wish it weren't, you know, running into our, our, our code, but I don't think the codes have fault there, because it's a weird situation. Well, here, it sounds more like it's, this is a problem, and I, these are not huge differences from what we decided, and they, they seem like they're, in keeping with the spirit of what we were trying to do, and from what you said of this, I'm kind of inclined to make the recommendation to council that we go with, with these suggestions.
How many of the applications have you processed, that are garage or accessory structure?
Accessory structures? That would exceed this requirement?
No, just in total.
Just in general, yeah, in the last year.
Fifty percent of them having trouble, or is it five percent?
Just, just the third or fourth I've talked about.
So how do you?
I've, I've processed fifty-two permits.
Fifty-two?
So ten percent, or less?
I have a question, I think Rose had, or somebody, had suggested just taking out the required. So it'd be thirty percent of rear yard, does that, what, how would that change it?
Like I said, it would, it would basically limit thirty percent required from applying in most cases to seven fifty, fifty percent would be the maximum.
Okay, so if we took out the required, it'd just be thirty percent of rear yard?
And, and, yes, and I just want to clarify that. Normally, if I see a situation where a variance would be, would be the proper approach to bring it to the board of zoning appeals, that is typically an option that I will provide. However, I feel that a variance application on this measure is so broadly applicable that it would set up an instance where anyone can apply for the same variance over and over again. In that instance, why are we having this regulation?
Just change the regulation.
Just, just get rid of the regulation altogether, because it's really covered by this other, in part of the code.
That's correct.
I think that in the, so, here since the new zoning code has passed, and we've had John here the last year, who is very qualified to review our, you know, look at what's working and what's not, I, I would favor knowing his, his recommendation. You know, I, I believe in a, you know, like, I think a lot of work went into the revision of the code, but I think that not everything could be foreseen, and that it can be in a faulty code. Especially taking advantage of John's work.
I agree with that.
Tim?
My three-two, just like I said, you never had this. Close to me. Yes, for a long time, so, it's really refreshing.
Yeah, that is, do you want to hear what people here?
Yeah. Yeah, people have asked anything to say about this? As before, identify yourselves.
On Parker Parkway, three two six Philip Street. We moved in early this spring, we've been making extensive renovations and that sort of thing. As part of that, we wanted to build a modest two-car garage at the rear of the lot with alleyway access. There's also a, a small shed, which has probably been there for fifty years or more, and it's about twelve by fifteen feet. I want to use it as a workshop, so we've also recited that and cleaned that up as well. So I'm really encouraged by, by the discussion so far, and I, I do agree that this thirty percent of the required rear yard, you know, the, as, as it I think we all understand that required rear yard as defined is this strip of land between a setback line and the actual property line, regardless of, we could have a five-acre backyard, but we're restricted by that little strip of, of land as, as defined. So I certainly support changing that language. And then the other things about adjusting the square footage, I, you know, I, I think we're okay there in either, in either case, but I encourage, that probably gives us a little wiggle on too, we're talking about a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, modest, modest two-car garage, so. Sort of like leaning stranger, you know, and, and we do have a lot and a half there. We based all of our numbers on, this may not be correct with John, but we based our numbers on the, the main, the main lot where our home is. This shed is on this adjacent strip of land, that's the only thing on that strip of land, so, you know, if, if we had to apply for variance, that would be one of our points, is that if you look at the combined square footage that we have there, we still have a lot of open space left, you know, that would be one of my points going forward, that hopefully we don't have to go that way.
Or we're talking about the other guy.
Get there.
Okay, well, I guess, based on what I'm hearing is.
Yeah, I think Alex Melvin to apply for, I've been working with him on the garage this year. Thanks guys for being here. Yeah, and I, I think that the, I was going to come in support of removing the word required, but upon reading this new language, I think it is a little fair in terms of the variability of rear yards in general. I guess the required yard is useful because it's somewhat uniform, but still kind of unfair. For people who want to build two-car garages, I think they also benefit the rental market, where carriage houses and things like that, so I think it benefits the village to have this kind of buildings going. And I don't need to say all this stuff over again.
Okay, great.
Thanks. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, well, I.
So should we, but should we vote on each little section?
I think we should, at least give John a recommendation as to whether we want to hear this as a formal, a formal language.
I move that the points, the rest under point one of the discussion should be brought forward as changes to the code to affect its body.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'll make a point, John, you're not going to be here, are you?
No. Denise will be.
Denise? I guess I'd be curious to see the number of applications versus the ones that have had problems. What kind of percentage we're talking about, are we talking about two percent, five percent, fifty percent?
I can go through, I mean, there are some applications that did not get permits. So they won't, they not, they wouldn't report. And I said, oh, why don't they do this?
Because of the difficulty. Well, even if you could anecdotally include those, because I think, I think those should be considered as well. And also, in the interim period, whether it's a month or three, I'd like to try to take some of those accounts and refresh myself on those discussions about where these all come from. Because it's all a little fuzzy.
Yeah. I don't mind, but.
Are you making that recommendation with the language changes that you discussed, or just as it stands here?
With the language, well, wait, what do you mean the language?
You sort of battered around.
As it stands. With John's language.
So just to review, that'd be a modification of section three of that to remove the, in any case, accessory buildings and structures shall not include thirty percent of required rear yard. And section six of that to add in language the total square footage of all in front of accessory structures, add on the property, shall not exceed sixty-six, sixty-six percent of the principal supporting building floor area or a hundred square feet, whichever is less.
Right. Twelve sixty-four eight point three, twelve sixty-four eight point six.
Any further discussion? Judy, you want to call the roll?
Yep. Holdo?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Aslan? You got three.
Yes.
Okay, next one list, John?
The next list, number two, we add swimming pool requirements. This is an addition of baseline of regulation protection for the village regarding extension of indoor, above, excuse me, outdoor and in-ground swimming pools, above ground, in-ground, I'm sorry. Currently, there are a regulation with zoning code or the village code ordinances regarding pools. Since fencing is a zoning requirement, it makes sense to regulate that aspect of pool installation. It should be noted that the intent of regulation is primarily addressed for pool installations, cover the R temp. It's covered, there are temporary pools that would exceed the minimum depth of two feet. Since they are temporary, they are typically not considered to be regulated under the zoning code. And there's a greater debate about these pools at a national level. Regardless, it would be up to the zoning administrator at the time and their discretion to decide whether these regulations would apply to temporary pools or not. Also, staff has found that in these cases, it's better for the village to have these regulations as to not have them, as it offers a baseline legal protection to the village and it's interested in the public's safety and welfare. And regulations are, above-ground and in-ground pools built above a depth of two feet shall meet the setback standards of the ordinance with the following provisions. A, the pool shall be surrounded by a fence at least four feet in height, and all sides to be accessed by self-closing and self-anching gates. And B, this pool surrounding by an elevated deck with hand railings and a gate may also be, may also comply with this requirement. So that's, this is where you have a pool surrounded by, in a yard, surrounded by a fence, with self-closing and self-anching gates, and then in the second instance, you have a depth-built ground pool. Now it has a gate, or a fence.
Okay. So.
Okay, so, any discussion here, any questions for John?
So this thirteen and fourteen are going under uses?
They're all accessory uses.
Accessory uses. How, okay. Why the use of the word, I just want to be clear, why may for thirteen be rather than does?
And shall.
Shall, yeah.
Because of, it's an alternative or exception to that. And if I use, well, your answer could be a shall. Because the A's, or maybe can, can also comply with requirement, the requirement of section A.
The goal, purpose of this, the large state, so it's, so much of the A is a must, but it's also, your second proposal would be alternatives or may may be an option.
Yeah.
It just sounds uncertain. Like, I guess I read it if I'm a homeowner and think about it, it's like may, it sounds like, oh, I don't know, well, it might not, it might not do it. What would be a circumstance where it would, that's, that's the way I would have to read it?
We can rewrite A, the pool shall be surrounded by a fence, at least four feet in height, with self-closing and self-anching gate, or by a deck, elevated deck with hand railings. So it would be an option.
And so the deck and the hand railing would be at least four feet in height?
If the, if the deck is built to building code specifications, they have to have a hand railing of at least three, two to three inches, I think, with no gap between, it's wider than two and a half inches. So if it's built to code, then it would basically take, be taller than a four-foot fence. So you have the above-ground pool, right, that is like at least three and a four feet around.
I would, I would prefer it, I, maybe I'm wrong, but to me, the may sounds like there's a question that would have to be, like, that sounds like harder, even though, but then there's nothing that tells me what I would have to do. So I, I think I would prefer it to just read or, and have it just be the only thing, either this or that.
Okay.
Can you add the word compliant? If you say self-anching gate or by a compliant elevated deck with hand railings? Or is that too big? I just heard you say that if, if the deck and hand railings are compliant, then they will suffice. If they're not, they won't, and that, that just seems like a big gap.
The thing is, they, we have to assume that everything complies with building codes. We don't specify, your house must comply with the Green County building codes because that's implicit that they have, anything you build has to comply with building codes. I mean, correct.
Yeah, but you can still add that language in there as a blanket.
This is a pool that's special and it should be like elevated deck and hand railing. It's just such a vague, it sounds vaguer than house, you know?
Especially because these are the kinds of things that homeowners may build themselves.
Exactly.
And so elevated, that'd be great, that'd be an elevation pool then? Because you don't want to have a pool that's higher or lower, I mean, a deck that's higher or lower than a pool.
Well, isn't that in the code? Wouldn't that be in the building code?
I think so. All the time I have.
Are we going to the code or are we going to?
Because the residential code doesn't really, you know, the residential code talks about the construction of the deck in the sense that you have to be hand railings and those types of, in like with the language.
It sounds like, well, I, I think maybe in this instance, going ahead and putting the language of elevated deck and hand railings.
Compliant with local building codes.
Even though we normally wouldn't do that for everything, for decks and things like that, it probably doesn't hurt to just put that language.
Yes, it doesn't hurt, right?
Doesn't hurt.
Do we need to repeat self-closing and self-anching?
So the only, and looking over this again, the only thing I certainly have for the self-closing, self-anching on the deck is that maybe what if there's a deck that's constructed that doesn't even have access outside of the house? For example, let's say it's on the back of your house, your, the self-closing, self-anching doesn't, doesn't apply to the door that you access the house to, that was already given. The self-closing, self-anching gates for access to the pool from outside, of course, because it's, it prevents someone from climbing a fence or going over somewhere and getting into your pool. So you already have right of entry from the door, so you don't need to have a second self-closing and self-anching gate for a deck that does not directly access the yard. So I would say that all exterior, even if it rests with the deck, would be self-closing, self-anching gate or something to that effect.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds like a good idea. I'm glad you discovered this, that we never even noticed that there was nothing about swimming pools. I obviously don't think about having a swimming pool in my yard, but.
Well, I think in general, the village pool is used so often that not everyone really has a pool in the village. However, we still need to have.
There definitely are, though.
Because there are pools.
It counts about town, I think, so.
I don't think you would better than the, well, that's up to fish ponds, koi ponds.
One to two feet deep?
If they're koi, they're four feet deep. They are, because it's koi needed.
They're four feet deep.
I was looking at your schedule, so.
But maybe are the rest of your landscaping?
I'm pretty sure.
No, they, yeah, more water would be better.
Yeah.
Maybe we actually had somebody else drown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then their, so their child was drowned trying to save.
Yeah.
Just this summer.
Well. In-ground pool, if you had a four-foot-deep koi pool, that would be an in-ground pool.
I mean, it could be interpreted as that. I think that the intent though is for a swimming pool. You fill a koi in a dish, square footage.
Pool, I think a pool means anything above the depth of two feet.
I think your point though is, I think the point that John was trying to address was the issue of someone trying to access the pool for illegal recreational purposes rather than, I'm going to fish right now in your pool.
Oh, I thought it was more for life. It's more for children.
But that, that's already, that's already, if you try to get insurance.
Yeah.
I mean, that's sort of regulated in other ways, other than the zoning code. Just saying. Not that I have a koi pond, I'm just.
Okay, well, I, I have this. I'll open it up for.
Yeah, any comments on this?
Burning issue in the swimming pool issue.
Okay. You want to motion to see if John brings this to us, this whole change?
I soove that John, sorry, not John. That staff bring back the language as modified, as discussed, putting the fence and the elevated deck in the same, effectively in the same sentence, as a single point under point thirteen.
You have a second?
A second?
Are you for this? You want to call the roll?
Yes, Toby?
Yes.
Hold on. And Aslan, you got Stiles? Yes, three?
Yes. All right. Next is driveways.
So this is a driveway to the exception, to the setback, to give it ready for driveways in a village for residential zones. The zoning code currently does not regulate, directly regulate the installation of driveways for residential properties. It regulates parking areas, however, does not count driveways as parking areas and commercial drives as parking lots. Code's text addition will give greater guidance and clearer clarity because they have a patient installation of driveways. Regulations allow driveways to be closer than the traditional side yard setback and also directs that the driveway be installed and that it not adversely affects the neighborhood properties. The text reads residential access driveways shall be at least three feet from the side property lines and construction shall ensure that drain, that drainage is swept away from adjacent properties.
Okay. Any discussion?
Has this come up in your, in a concrete form, so to speak?
We've had a couple of situations where people have wanted to install, have been asking where the driveway needs to be installed, and the zoning code doesn't even address this. So it implies that the driveway is, whatever the side yard setback is, in the pictures, but that is not a concrete.
Right.
Kind of like a suggestion. So this would, yeah.
Should this be in accessory uses? Should it also be added somewhere else in the code that talks about?
Traditionally, it's been, in other zoning codes, it's been regulated as an accessory structure for accessory use.
Okay, I guess it is.
I agree with a little on, so American. Don't feel accessory.
And this is also kind of like, it's a construction project, this is the regulations supposed to act vertically acceptable, usually by staff, they show here first.
I'm surprised that he closed drives.
I know, sounds strange. Well, it seems good to me.
Any more discussion here?
I have a question.
Yes?
It's general.
You want to?
Alex Melman. If this, if you guys approve these language changes, they arrive, show up in the next village council meeting for?
Not that fast.
They got to come here.
Sorry, they got to come here first.
As a formal.
This is informal, don't be a formal one.
It can be advertised in the paper.
We need to have it as a text to the paper.
My, my advice will be for us to definitely take this up right away in September, so if you get to council by October, I do, that would be my advice.
And does council need two readings of it?
It'd be an ordinance change, so yeah, boy.
So that's.
Yeah, it does need two readings. Now, we could vote on them as an emergency measure if the case were needed. And that would mean committing so that it would take effect immediately.
Could make the difference between breaking ground this year.
Usually it has, the language has to be about welfare, blah, blah, blah. So, well, you can talk to maybe our, I'll try to find out a little bit more about, about that since there are people who are affected by it.
It actually would meet the litmus test for economic development and therefore the welfare and prosperity of the village. I mean, it would meet it. And really, you just have to make the case that it's comfortable with. It's not just one guy.
That's usually what it is.
It's a lot controversial.
Yeah. So we can, we can try to make that case.
Okay, any further questions for John? If not, you have a motion to, maybe you bring this text back to us as a formal change?
So move. Second?
You have a second, you second, Roy? Okay.
And was that you, Louis?
Yeah. Okay. Stiles? Yes. Aslan? Yeah. Hold on? Yes. Toby?
Yes.
Three?
Okay, before we get to the signs. They're not conforming lots of record. John, again, you want to kind of give us the nutshell?
This proposal arrives out of a discussion we created in the last, long time for last several months. Staff found that the process for enforcing creating a zoning lot determination would exceed the resources available to the staff. Basically require keeping our current application on file that would be separate from county auditor and orders, which would create a lot of confusion on that. So we would be, have actually been exploring just text changes that would grant the types of exemptions to interior lots that are owned by the same entity for non-principal structures. So the regulation was crafted to allow properties that are made up of a series of non-conforming lots or if you have a conforming lot adjacent to a non-conforming lot, to be counted as one lot for purposes, for those purposes only. So the language crafted does not include a series of billable lots. Also, it's not, it's not, it's drafted to also comply with regulations that you have one principal structure per lot, which is in section twelve sixty.
So this is to avoid requiring property owners to.
Replat.
Replat, and re-survey.
For the purposes of just building accessory stuff. You demolish your house, build a new house, you got to replat if you're going to do something over that line.
So this is for two non-conforming or one conforming and one non-conforming?
If I have one non-conforming and one non-conforming together, it can count as a, as a total lot area. The exterior of that would be the lot setbacks, so it would account for the interior lots. And then, or you have a conforming lot next to, like, maybe an alley, little alley right away and then a vacay or something, and that would be kind of together instead of separately.
What about if you have two conforming lots?
No.
Okay. You have to define it as a replat.
Yeah. If you want to build across that property line. The text says that adjoining non-conforming lots of record or non-conforming lots adjoining conforming lots that are owned by the same property owner of record shall be counted as a whole for the purpose of erecting accessory structures, additions, fences, and signs if the fouling criteria are met. One, there's an existing principal structure on the property and it was constructed prior to the adoption of zone orders. Two, proposed improvements must comply with the existing zoning setback regulations for the exterior portions of the adjoining lots not owned by the same property owner. So that means it just only applies to non-conforming lots of record. You can't have two conforming lots together.
Okay, and a non-conforming lot is?
A lot that doesn't meet the zoning setback, the zoning with.
Too small, usually, yeah. And so someone could build on both lots and like straddle them, one is too small, others?
What I'm saying is that it's only applies to accessory structures because you don't want to, you can't have a principal structure occupying two, a brand-new one. But you have, we have situations in the village, all over the place, where a principal structure built before the adoption of zoning code straddles lots or is part of a series of two or three lots that are all non-conforming and they want to do things like build garages and fences, and I have to tell them replat for something that is really like a one thousand or two thousand dollar job. So what this does is it makes those lots count as one.
Right.
But only for non-conforming or conforming that are adjacent to a non-conforming, that are owned by the same entity, the same entity on the auditor sites.
I mean, it seems like this is something that is logical to. I mean, it seems like this is something that is logical to do because these are minimal changes being made and that adding the time and the expense of the whole replat process shouldn't have to happen because somebody wants to put the fence over the wall. Because that, your immediate situation, that makes sense to me.
Any other comments?
You did change the instrument R.
Which word did I...
That would be the last word before the colon, R, that took a dramatic...
Oh, yeah.
You read it correctly, so, uh...
She's a professor.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do my, my crew's reading, sorry.
Uh, yeah, okay.
Alex Nohman? Um, yeah, I think this, uh, this language is very helpful in terms of clarifying, uh, what is allowed because there's a lot of incentive, I think, to maybe say, oh, well, we want to build this thing here and if it helps us, if we don't count it, there's a lot of ambiguity. So it's just a, an odd fairness. Yeah?
Okay, great.
Okay.
Anybody else?
More comments? Okay, back to us. Um, any more comments for John, if we have a recommendation here or a motion?
Can I move that we approve the additional language that hopefully provided by staff on non-conforming lots of record? Second?
I'll give a second?
Does it miss R, is there a, that is?
Yeah.
Judy, you want a poll rule?
Toby?
Yeah.
Styles?
Yes.
Fozell?
Yeah.
Aslan?
Yep.
Three?
Yes. Okay, say third, are you gonna press on with the signs?
And let's, let's do it. I think the signs is such a disaster that anything, I want to hear from John before he leaves about our disaster.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I just want to say this is my favorite part of the entire vision.
Oh, yeah.
Is it?
Because it's colored.
It's colored.
The other thing is that...
I just want to say that every time I looked at the sign section of the code, it gave me despair. And when I asked people to help me, like, make any heads or tails of it, they didn't. So anything that makes it clearer and shorter is going to be great, just awesome.
I think they keep a light process, they're always pretty bold.
If you guys gave it a...
It's awesome.
No, I, I already like better cuts of the legislation.
Well, and it doesn't change anything, it just puts it in a, you know, it's, it's up to the gentleman.
So, yeah, just the, the long version is that this isn't altering regulations, it makes them readable. Uh, what is basically done is just taking four pages of the document down to, uh, what that, what that entails is a little bit on the, on the base, a little more complicated, so each sign is now a type of sign, so type A, type B, and so forth. But they are now, uh, which, the problem with existing sign regulations are that there are a lot of times where a sign type is just restated several times.
Yes.
And that the same regulations are very similar, or there's some, there's one thing that's different. So what I've done is I've gone through the, ground sign is, for example, is in three different places, four different places.
Right.
Um, now it's only, it's a type A sign.
Yes.
And same thing over wall sign, some other ones.
Yeah, no, I love this. It actually doesn't scare me the way the old section did, and that is a good thing.
And so the table is split into two now, table A and table B, and fortunately the, shoot me up. There's still table A and table B. So table, uh, table A is now a chart that adds the different zones and then the type of sign classifications on top. And the P stand for permitted, and the star stand for permitted in non-residential uses only. And, uh, the swimming line is not permitted. So we have a series of chart that clearly shows where each sign type is located now.
Right.
One thing I, of the original table I did change, did keep, and that's why table twelve sixty-six oh five B is still around, is there are signs that are permitted in all districts, I just left that alone because that's just being silly for table two, table five. But that's basically a format change.
Where did the sixty-four square feet come from? About forty-eight is the biggest that we have.
That's those in the code. Sixty-four square feet?
So what wall area is five, sixty-four square feet is five percent of the wall area.
We don't have any walls in town that are that big.
That's it.
We do, oh.
I don't think that's on that.
Yeah, I guess a Gregor would be...
These are all in the code right now.
Yeah, I know, I know. But you do, I mean, obviously you've looked at these and you don't, you may think it's a little ridiculous because it's so unlikely to occur, but you don't think it's causing a problem.
No, I don't see any regulations that are causing problems, I just see, um, being able to navigate the site work that's the biggest problem.
Yeah, so no, I, this is so much better, I love it. Now, really, I, I literally just kind of, every time we came to signs, we were in the process. I'm like, I, I don't, I never have ever put up a sign, I have no idea what, whether this is good or bad.
Something like the wall signs, where you're considering like cars, pizzas, painting on the wall.
So painting on the sign.
Sorry.
Um, technically, it's got a text on it, it's supposed to be considered a wall as a sign. Uh, but because this, that, that painting is, precedes the adoption of this code, that's written on it.
That's right, I think it's...
Yeah.
It won't be seen.
Oh, huh, it's a, yeah, because it's a sign. We did have a discussion on it.
If it's got its own word on it, it's a sign.
And, uh, I don't remember that discussion very well, other than that I felt like, I feel like my hand painted sign makes a little bit different.
It's actually a mural.
Yeah. I think it was actually on the wall, right?
It's actually paint on the wall.
Yeah, it's probably a mural.
But it's still a fall under that...
And it's a mural.
Yeah.
Now it's landing in the wall, I guess. Can I, can I make a couple of suggestions?
Sure.
For, for, I can't find a sixty-four, so, right here. I know in the old code, forty-eight's the old, maybe a second five.
Oh, you can't find it in the current, in the current code.
I found it.
Did you?
Under wall sign, um...
It was under wall sign.
Not for non...
Sixty-four square feet.
Educational, that's two square feet.
Ground sign for non-residential.
Well, it's under wall sign.
Okay.
And it's under wall.
Residential.
Yeah.
Wall sign.
For non-residential.
Oh, sixty-six.
Not assuming it's more...
Oh, yeah, okay, awesome, okay. Forget that, then, and then secondly, um, can we put the actual zoning area designations here instead of, say, commercial? Does commercial mean business and industrial?
Oh, just like business districts, and that's what they had in there.
Just to be fair, I'm sure it's not, it's consistent with the, with the designation.
So you just like, B one, two?
Business districts is more?
Yeah, Iowa, I see.
Business and industrial, maybe?
And then is educational, other? Anyway, just the specific action or designations instead of other or commercial?
Do we?
We do have conservation.
Yeah.
That's a true.
So residential would be R, A, D, and C then?
No, I think it would just leave residential, that's what is the R and R A. It's just that we use business and industrial, so commercial, just change commercial to business and industrial. Other, I think would be educational.
What's not educational?
Commercial would be business districts then. It's not, industrials.
Is industrial and other?
Is another.
Oh.
So others are industrial and industrial.
That, yeah, so I think that would be helpful.
So others should be, um, industrial and agricultural.
Or edu- educational?
And educational.
Because it's definitely not residential. And the chart would verify that too.
Yeah.
That's it, you already got it, it's in the chart.
We don't have agricultural.
No, we don't.
We don't have agricultural. We just have educational and...
But you could, you could, but we...
Get rid of it.
We did not rid of it.
With the wall sign appears as the sixty-four square feet in educational and industrial? Or just an educational? I see industrial. I see, and educational, so you just want other to be education and industrial?
I think so. And commercial to be business.
Yeah, we have that as business.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I think it would, I think those are the only ones we have, right?
Business, educational, what would be considered, so...
Yeah, sixty-four square feet, that's under both educational and industrial.
There's no change to the, to the special. Right.
Now, does this code address, I've heard it mentioned before, political signs thirty days below, was this?
Yeah.
Is it supposed to be?
Political signs that are not, that are not to this section?
Okay.
They're in section twelve sixteen, that's... Siding.
Sixteen six.
Is that the oldest six community special sign?
Under tables...
Special event sign, right?
Signs exempt from prominence. Actually, twelve sixty-six oh three. That's a table.
Lot sixty-six oh three.
Yeah.
Did you say something?
Then she said that they shout out, you put it in the right...
There used to be a timing on it, thirty days.
That's set by the state.
Is that state?
I think.
Yeah, so there's a state.
It's a state, yeah. Well, I, I would like to move that we, uh, also have this reorganization of sign section brought to us as a formal, um, uh, piece of legislation. Text amendment, thank you. So that's a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. Can we exclude the, uh...
Oh, yeah, with the, with the minor amendments so discussed regarding the designation of, uh, districts.
Maybe not subdual.
Oh, those are customizable by, uh, by veritable, actually put them in the...
Okay.
A lot of the texts will be...
Let it be known that the purple is the older.
Whatever the, the, any discussion? Uh, Judy?
Piltoe?
Yes.
Aslan?
Yep.
Toby?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
Three?
Yes. I think we're finished.
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
John, thanks, sorry to see you go.
We are sorry, I'm really glad about the work that you did get done on the, I mean, all the work you got done, but this zoning code work, I'm especially pleased with.
Thank you. Um, I guess I just want to say, I've got, it's been a pleasure working with everybody here. It's been one of the best planning missions I've experienced, so, um, it's been really horrible.
That's actually good for volunteers.
I hope that, you know, we all stay in touch, and, you know, I, you know, always, you know, if you ever need anything, I can help with directions, don't say email me or call me and we can talk.
Awesome, great, thank you, that's what's just...
We have nothing left on the agenda, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, we have a planning?
Yeah, that's hard.
You had suggested?
I would like us to go ahead and plan to meet because I think these changes are kind of pressing. Is it possible to get them done by the time of our scheduled September whatever?
Fourteenth?
Is it fourteenth?
No.
Second Monday.
Second Monday is the fourteenth.
Wait, wait a second, this paper comes out on the one, two, third? Yeah, actually, but only if, John, you can get the language ready for me by tomorrow.
Okay.
And I, and they may, they may not be able to take that much...
Text.
Text, if they can, um, perhaps you would consider going to a, the fourth Monday?
The fourth Monday and doing it twice, or you mean...
What if they put it on the website, is that...
It has to be in the paper?
Okay.
Well, I would say, I would be okay with the fourth Monday is September twenty-eighth. I don't, I don't think I've got anything.
The fourth Monday is for twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Well, I can, I can let you know, I have a little note tomorrow, and I'll send it, you know, if I ask if I've got the space and then can you get us coming tomorrow to get it, and then I'll let you know if it's gonna...
Yeah.
Is it, does it work mainly for...
It works for me to have it be on the twenty-eighth. Does anybody else know if they got it?
I could be more like a...
Possibly. I'm available.
You're available?
We're good.
Okay, so we've got, we're, we're gonna be good. All right, so I would say, uh, yes, let's try to do it at our regular meeting, but if they can't get in the paper, then let's just put it out to the twenty-eighth. I think it's probably better than having two separate meetings, it's just...
Yeah.
I'd rather just do it on one level.
And then your chair election.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, double check on that, whether we...
I think we did. Maybe not formally though.
I think we did too.
We talked about it. But we might have not, we, we might have...
Rose and I are so new that we remember that.
No, I mean, we would have, I mean, it's not, it's...
No, I don't think we did before.
But I think it happened before we were...
Yeah.
It would have happened.
Yeah.
There was a lot of changeover in life.
We will find out if I've been operating for that happening and a meeting that I put on an official chair.
Yeah, I would have thought it would have happened.
Yeah, I think so, maybe let's keep that.
Yeah. Okay, well, with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move second?
On paper.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone.